Welcome to North Metro TV News's coverage of your decision here in 2018. I'm Rusty Ray, news producer and anchor here for North Metro TV News. And we're excited to welcome in candidates from local races that you will be deciding here coming up on November 6th. And we will talk this evening with three candidates for Centerville City Council. And they include candidates Gregory Noner and Michelle Lacso and incumbent candidate Dee Love. Welcome to North Metro TV. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So we will have a format that's conversational tonight. We're going to start with opening statements from each of these candidates. They will have one minute to give that statement. And then we're going to go through a series of questions. And we will go in order based on a drawing right before we started taping here tonight. And each candidate will have a minute to also answer that question. And then we will proceed from there with a closing statement once we get to the end of the program. They've all been advised of this and we're ready to go here with an opening statement first from candidate Gregory Noner.
Hi, my name's Greg Noner. I've lived in Centerville with my wife Mary Jo since 2001. I'm retired and primary caregiver to my wife. My background includes 30 years of management positions in heavy-duty truck parts. Prior to that, I worked for an engineering firm doing environmental studies for municipalities. I worked at approximately 200 cities around the country doing pollution abatement projects. After getting tired of living out of suitcase and traveling, I went to work for Fruitvale Trailer, then worked my way up to parts manager, and then took on transfer to St. Louis, and then worked for Freightliner. And I worked on my homeowners association in various roles.
Okay. Gregory Noner, thank you very much. Now, an opening statement from candidate Michelle Lacso.
Hi, I'm Michelle Lacso. I have lived in the city of Centerville since 2002. I grew up in Waper Lake and moved just a bit north. And I live right behind Asian To Go and Carboni's on Main Street. I have a family of three daughters and two cats and a husband. I work for the state of Minnesota. I started working with the city, it seems like forever ago, but about probably 2003. I was on planning and zoning committee, and then the council seat came open and I was like, eh, it's probably not much different. And it was, but it was from 2005 to 2009. And I was on council at that time. I think I got the award for having the most children while on council. I had two of my girls while I was on council. All the meantime, I was running the community emergency response team through the Centennial Lakes Police Department. And now I do emergency management really strongly with our community and with the state.
Okay, Michelle, thank you very much for that. And now, from candidate and incumbent Dee Love.
Thank you. Well, I've been on council since 2009. I've actually lived in Centerville for 17 years. And throughout my entire time within Centerville, I've been involved within the community in some way, shape, or form, whether that being coaching, basketball, football, being on planning and zoning for seven years, and then being on city council for nine years. I've also spent a lot of time being involved by announcing the parade, teaching Sunday School, coaching varsity sports, announcing sports within the community. I recently said to the principal at the middle school about myself and my family, we are Centennial. So I'll shorten that to say, we are Centerville because I've just been so ingrained in the community since I've been here. I've been around the country promoting Centerville and being a part of Centerville as a member of the League of Minnesota Cities. And I've also been in other parts of the state talking about Centerville and really promoting us as a community. Enjoyed the opportunity to answer some questions tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dee. Thank you all three for your opening statements. And now we will proceed with some questions that we've come up with. And again, they will be able to answer those in an order that we've already set up. And so the first question for the three of you, and the first response will come from Michelle, is what leads you to this point? What has led you to decide to run for this office in 2018? Whether this is your first time running or you've already held an office before?
Okay. Well, it has seemed that every time election season with open seats on council or mayor come around, I get a lot of folks coming my way saying, are you running again? And I say, no, but you should. And then, actually, this time around, I was really, my passion is for women in leadership. And it's just really a part of having a diverse way of leading the city. And I haven't seen a woman in leadership in Centerville in quite some time. So instead of not doing anything about it and just being like, this is really frustrating, I decided that it was a good time to take that step out again now that, you know, I've got a little bit of experience under my belt with life and ten years from my council term from before. A lot of things have pulled me to this point. So I'm excited for the opportunity that came up again and the courage to be able to take that step.
Okay, thank you very much. Dee?
Well, as you noted, I'm the incumbent, so it seemed like a regular thing to do to run for office again. Why again, though? Well, I've been here for nine years and we've done some really great things in Centerville. I mean, we've really progressed as a city. We've paid down some debt. We're starting to grow. We're seeing things around us really come to fruition. And I just hate to leave now. I have such a passion for being a part of the city and being involved in the leadership of the city that there's no way that I would want to leave as we're starting to hit our stride and really starting to grow and better ourselves. So I just want to continue to keep the momentum going, continue to show that vision, but also that constraint at the same time, and continue to be a good leader and servant in our community.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we turn the question to you. Gregory, what leads you to this point to want to run for office?
Well, I have lived in Centerville since 2001. I'm in a town home association. I've served on my homeowners board as a member-at-large, as vice president. And in that, we're able to, you know, it's not any paid position or anything, but we're able to, you know, like I think Mayor Capra said one time, you guys are like a little city within a city. And I remember like in the '08 storm, we, you know, took it upon ourselves, the board did, to manage the project so we could repair our houses versus, you know, turning some money over to our management company, being they'd take, you know, the $1.8 million claim, take, you know, a third of it. So, and I'd like to do that for, you know, the city as a whole now, is give back.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Next question, we want to talk about your community. We want to talk about Centerville. And I want to ask each of you, what is the biggest single issue that you think is facing your community? What is the biggest issue right now facing the people in Centerville? We'll start with you, Dee.
Well, the canned answer is always going to be high taxes. That's what everyone always says about Centerville. Well, our tax base has really remained rather steady over a number of years. We've done a really good job of maintaining that tax base. So our biggest issue that we have is we have a ton of growth going on around us. We're surrounded by Lino Lakes, so we're inside of those borders, and they're growing. And as a result of their growth, we're also seeing some growth as well. I don't want to say it's all because of them, but we're also seeing some growth. So then, the biggest thing that you can really kind of push yourself is to say, wow, we're out of the tough times and we're growing. But to show that real constraint while also showing vision to help us grow in the right way and do the right things and provide the right amenities for the people of our city.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Gregory, biggest issue?
Biggest issue, I think, is we as a city need to continue to pay down our debt. I'd like to compliment Dee and the current city council on their efforts in this area. I think we're roughly sitting around $8 million right now. It's been paid down from about 10 or 11 in the last year. I agree, we are constrained by the growth around us. But I think we need to continue to focus on the debt. And then I'd like to see us, you know, enhance our tax base by getting some more companies, you know, growing. We have our truck equipment place that just is in the process of building. We have, you know, a little bit of commercial land left, and I think we should continue to, you know, work at developing that.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And now, Michelle, finally, you. What do you think are the biggest issue, I should say, facing Centerville?
Yeah, so for me, I look at how the city has changed since 2002. And maybe outwardly hasn't changed a lot, but the generations have. So one of the things that really interests me is to how to lead a city with all of the generations in mind. So you've got the folks that are in the senior category that you want to make sure our amenities lend to that because there's definitely, within the city, that's where we want them to live and thrive. And same thing for anybody in the spectrum of their midlife, and then for little ones and the folks, the little kids of the community. So how to manage that when everybody has such different and distinct needs? So for me, that's one of the main issues, is how to be a responsive government that leads and provides all the services and is responsive to the needs when they're very different needs.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. You know, Gregory, you were just mentioning, and we kind of touched on this, a few other responses, the development surrounded by a community, Lino Lakes, that is seeing tremendous growth and development, certainly with private homes and things. But within the city of Centerville, there is still development going on. You mentioned it, and we've got the Rufford Johnson Project going.
Yes.
That's a chance to diversify the tax base there. Do you, this is the question, do you think that you will be able to use something like that to effectively diversify the tax base, given, I think, the physical constraints of the city limits and the natural limits and things like that? And so that question, we will start with you, Gregory. Do you think that that's the best way, that kind of development, to diversify the tax base for Centerville?
Oh, absolutely. Because most of the residential areas are developed. We do have some industrial areas that we can still. And I think when you bring, you know, businesses in and stuff, you spread the tax base. But then also, more importantly, you provide, you know, a place for, you know, the residents to get jobs and, you know, to, you know, grow our tax base so we don't put the burden on the homeowners. But yeah, I think bringing it so, you know, you can have a community where you can work in it, live in it, and not have to, you know, drive across town for your job and things like that.
Okay.
Where you can work where you live.
Okay. Gregory, thank you very much. Michelle, again, is this a good way, industrial projects like the Rufford Johnson and other things, that the best way to diversify the tax base?
From what I know, I think we've already zoned things in particular to that larger plan in the future. So definitely maximizing what we have and making sure that anything that is able to be developed, if we can market it, get folks in, like Greg was saying, just get people as a self-sustaining community. And so really, I think those existing retail areas, encouraging them, keep investing in their thriving community partnerships, the businesses that we have, driving our residents to have an incentive to support those. What a great way to use what we have in its limited space, which isn't a bad thing. And then, of course, any development that can come along with it would be fantastic, and it's coming, I think it really is.
Okay, Michelle, thank you very much. Now the question goes to you, Mr. Councilman, Dee Love, talking about the tax base.
Absolutely. Well, I think that is one great way to diversify the tax base, but I think there are many ways. We have some commercial areas that we want to grow in as well. We have some homes that we want to put up as well. We have a beautiful community that's about to be built right along the lake there. I would not say that would be bad for our commercial base. I think it's going to be great for our commercial base. But we've been creative as well. I mean, we've changed our garbage carrier to save our taxpayers' dollars. We've implemented taking in a fee from other businesses that run their Wi-Fi and other community things through our trail, our ditches, so that we could take fees in from that. So there are other ways to diversify our tax base, and we've really worked on some of those. And we're still open for business. We're waiting for others to come on in and talk to us.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Dee. Now, a little bit of a wild card question, gets away from what we've been talking about. And it's a kind of a current events thing, right? Thirteen communities in Minnesota, including many here in the metro area, have voted to raise the age for buying tobacco to 21-years-old for young people. And is that something, this is the question, is that something that you would consider in a leadership position in Centerville? And we will start with you, Michelle.
Well, that is a wild card. Hmm, I don't even know. I think there's more pressing issues I'd like to focus on as Centerville City Council. So certainly, if it gets brought before the council on an agenda item, it's worth discussion. You said thirteen. Others have, in the county, is that what she said?
In the state of Minnesota, changed their ordinances.
In the state. Okay. So I think, as, just going back to being responsive, if that's a need the community has for us to deliberate and discuss that, so be it. My own personal opinions aside, that's not how I always make my decisions. I do those with my informed experts and other folks that help inform the decision. So if that's the point we got to in Centerville, to make that decision, I would just rely on those folks that are giving the recommendations and the research to that.
Okay, all right. And now, to you, Dee Love.
I would say that I would definitely want to hear from others to take their opinions in. But if you were asking my opinion, I would say that public health and safety is a big part of our communities. And whatever we can do to help that cause, I think we should do it. I'm always, you know, you've heard me talk about coaching, so I'm always looking out for our kids. That's very important to me. And I would say if I had to take a stance on that and was able to maybe help that younger generation persuade them not to go that route, because I know that it is bad for your health, absolutely, I would be in favor for it. And thinking about my role as a League of Minnesota Cities official and also on the insurance trust, anything that we can do to help promote safety. And many people may not think of that as safety, but hey, our surgeon general said it is. So therefore, they're smarter than I am as far as that goes. So I would vote for it.
Okay. Thank you very much. And the question now goes to you, Gregory.
Yeah, I think we should, you know, do whatever we can to discourage, you know, children and stuff. I'm an ex-smoker. Best decision I ever made was, you know, other than marrying my wife, was when she said, hey, why don't you quit with the cigarettes? And so I did. And I think, you know, there's so much influence, both from, you know, their peers and, you know, I was glad to see that the commercials went off TV years ago and stuff. But I think anything we can do to encourage our kids to live a healthier lifestyle, you know, a lot of that, you know, it has to fall back to the parents. It's how they're brought up. But if we can discourage it from a city, you know, point as far as restricting cigarette sales, we should.
Okay. Gregory, thank you very much. That was the wild card question, I promise.
Okay.
It's a topical thing out there, right?
Now, do we get to ask him one, too?
We can do that after we're finished.
Oh, okay.
He can ask whatever he wants after we're finished. So now, we're thinking about this, and we wanted to know what you would do when you have to describe this role, this job, as a city council member? If you had to explain it to somebody, the scope of the responsibility, the pressures, the whatever, if you had to describe, this is what we do as a council member, or I guess perhaps, this is what I would think I would do as a council member? We want to know how you would describe that to someone who asked, or somebody that you meet, maybe in the course even of campaigning. So that's the question. How do you define the role of a city council member? And we will start with the city council member, Dee Love.
Somehow, I knew that would land on me first. Well, how would I describe my role? I would describe my role as one in which you have to be a leader, but also a servant. You're leading and making decisions for a community as a whole. You're trying to think about what's best for the community and not what's best for maybe me or my next-door neighbor. But then also, to be ready to serve your community in whatever ways that your community may need you. And that may be, whether it's serving on a committee like the police governing board, or being involved in a committee outside of the city to promote your city, or going and speaking engagements, or whatever that may be, to be the face of your city. But then, also to come back and serve and be prepared and make great decisions based on research and looking at all the information.
Okay, thank you very much. Gregory, the question goes to you. How would you define, to someone else, if you were just in conversation, the role of city councilman?
Well, I think, you know, we, you know, first have to be good stewards of the citizens' tax dollars. We have to use them wisely, look at it, you know. In my roles as management for truck dealerships and director of purchasing, I always looked at, would I buy that part? Would I invest, you know, my boss's money? You know, I looked at it as if it was my money, would I invest it this way, in this product line or inventory? And I think we as city council members need to be good stewards of the citizens' money. You know, they're the ones that are putting their trust in us to make good, informed decisions and use the tax dollars that we're given, you know, the use of wisely.
Okay, Gregory, thank you very much. Now the question from Michelle. How would you define this job?
It just strikes me, it's a select few that even want to put their name in this realm of being on city council. And I've found that it's the folks that really dedicate their lives to the city and to make the right decisions, whether they look right on the outside or not. A lot of opinions come into play, but you are trying to do the greatest good for the greatest number. And I've described that as a real honor and a privilege, just to be able to run and to pay the $2 fee, to be on a ballot. What a deal. But then to have the citizens show that they want you there because you have stepped out and they trust that those decisions are going to be made by somebody who's got their safety, their health, their longevity, their tax dollars, and their livelihood and their life in mind. And I said in one of my articles that I really was, you could live anywhere in the world, you really could, but you choose Centerville. And that's a pretty cool thing to be able to lead that.
Okay, thank you very much. Next question, let's think, big picture. Let's think down the road. I think part of the process of thinking about running for office or even serving in that office is to think into the future. So my question here is, what do you see down the road for the community of Centerville? Ten to 15 years, let's put a timeframe on it. What do you hope for? What do you see down the road for the community? And we will start, Gregory, with you.
Well, I would like to see us, you know, work on our tax base by attracting some additional businesses. I'd like to see us get a family-style restaurant where you could go and, you know, we could have this forum there instead of here at your studio. And, you know, work at growing, you know, the community spirit of Centerville and stuff. I'd like to see us enhance, you know, our park system. I'd like to see us, you know, make it, the lakes that we're fortunate enough to have, to where they're more accessible for people, you know, where we could, you know, go rent a pontoon if you wanted to take your family out and cruise around one of our beautiful lakes. You know, make it more family-friendly.
Okay, thank you very much. Michelle, 10 to 15 years down the road?
I would love to just see people keep pride in the community, but their own home where they live, which they do right now. And I would just want that to continue where everybody takes care of their space, their lot, their land, and lends to the community that they live in, the pride that we have and where we live. Hopefully, when I say I live in Centerville, people don't ask me, where in the world is that? And I say, oh, it's just North Way Bear and right by Lino Lakes and Hugo. I'd like it to stand alone. So what a, what a great thing that would be in 10 to 15 years, where Centerville is not just a neighbor to Hugo or Lino Lakes, it's a destination, a niche. But I think that'll come with the growth, but I think it also comes with an identity and that the council, the current council and councils before have continued to develop and grow and with that spirit and with the folks that live there, that they've lived there a while, they've invested. And that's what I'd like to see 10 to 15 years from now, is a group of the folks that live in our community that have, this is, they didn't just land there, they're there because they want to be.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we turn it to you, 10 to 15 years down the road.
We will be thriving. We will be a community of diverse people. We will be a community that people want to come to and visit. We will be a community that has amenities. Our downtown will look a little different. 20th Avenue will look different. We will be thriving. I just know it. We've been patient. We've been great stewards of our money so that we would be in a great place to grow when opportunities came. The opportunities are coming, and we will be ready. We're open for business.
Okay, Dee, thank you very much. All right, we've come to the last question that we have before we'll then make closing statements. And that question, again, maybe narrow that down a little bit. And I'll ask you simply this. If elected to city council, or in your case, reelected in that term, what do you hope to accomplish in that role in that term on city council? Michelle, start with you.
Well, in the end, I want to accomplish that the decisions were made in an informed way with the financial elements considered strongly, but with public opinion in play as well. And maybe even trying to solicit more of that, because it's really challenging to speak for folks that live in the community when they don't really tell you what they want until there's some dispute. So just trying to open up this role a little bit more and be there for people to comfortably say, even, everything's going great, but if it's not letting us know. And so that's kind of where I would stand on that for this term.
All right, thank you very much. Dee, if reelected the next term, what would you hope to accomplish in that?
I'm really excited. I mean, to say that we are seeing the tip of what's going on right now, to see, as we're driving up here to Blaine today, to see a pile of dirt where Waterworks used to be, that, gosh, I don't even know how tall, it's really tall, just is some incredible growth. And I anticipate that we will continue to see that. More importantly, though, I think we're also going to make sure that our fire and our police are still well-maintained and we're still protecting our community. I think that is a huge part of being a citizen in Centerville, of Centerville, is that you know that you live in a safe place, that you want to be able to come home, you know, whether you work somewhere outside the community, far or near, you want to become, you want to come home, feel safe in your community, know your kids can go outside and play, and just not worry. And I enjoy living in a community like that. I want to continue to live in one like that.
Okay, Dee, thank you very much. Gregory, what would you hope to accomplish if elected?
Well, continue to be a good steward of the citizens' money. And look, you know, we have limited growth opportunities because, as, you know, we've all mentioned, we're a city that's pretty well-built out. I'd like to see us enhance the parks, make them more friendly, you know, for families with children. You know, we're a community that, you know, a lot of the older residents are moving along and you have younger families moving in. And I want to see where we continue to attract, you know, families and keep our community up and, you know, make it so that it, you know, is a nice destination. You know, we have nice lakes and nice parks, and I'd like to see us continue to enhance them and to grow as a community.
Okay, thank you very much. Those are the questions I have to guide our discussion here for this program. I will now give you each a chance to offer a one-minute closing statement. Again, this was predetermined, the order for this was predetermined before we started taping. Gregory, it is your chance for your one-minute closing statement.
Okay, I appreciate the opportunity to run for city council. I have some very qualified people I'm going against. I think one of the things that has made me decide to run is I worked on my homeowners' association. And like previous mayors have said, we're a community within a community. And we, you know, took care of being good steward of our monthly dues and taking care of our community, making sure we're a nice area of Centerville. And I'd like to, you know, take that drive and determination to help enhance, you know, Centerville as a whole. And I'd like to thank the people I'm running against. They're very good citizens of Centerville, and I hope everybody just gets out and votes.
Okay. Gregory, thank you very much for that. Michelle, your turn for a closing statement.
All right. Well, thank you for your time, for tuning in and even just listening. That's huge civic involvement right there. And I appreciate the opportunity to say hello to everybody, introduce who I am, and just hopefully be able to continue my involvement in the city on city council in a way that's a little bit different than the, working with the police department and the community emergency response team, the fire department. But I love bringing it all together because these are the folks that I've lived and worked with since we've moved there. And such pride, and I don't know a better way to show my thanks, my pride, and And such pride, and I don't know a better way to show my thanks, my pride and a better way to be involved and be on the city council. And so, I hope that I'm elected this November for that leadership opportunity. Thank you.
Michelle, thank you very much. And for your closing statement, we turn it over to Dee Love.
Thank you. I want to start off by saying I'm humbled and I am thankful for the opportunity that I've received to serve my neighbors for the last nine years. I was appointed that first year, but I've been reelected twice. And just that honor is more than I can ever truly, really express. You know, I don't take it for granted. So, with that, though, I do want to continue to have that opportunity to continue to serve and be a leader within the community. I care deeply about Centerville. Centerville is very important to me. Raised three kids here. My wife and I have lived here for 17 years. This is home. I have no plans to move anywhere. I love being involved in very many, in many facets of the community. It's not just one, it's not just local government. My wife always says, how do you have time to do all of the things that you choose to do? But it's because I love my community and I want to remain involved with it. So, thank you for that opportunity.
Okay. Thank you very much, all three of you, for those statements, for this discussion here as part of our coverage of your decision here in 2018. I want to thank all the candidates here, Gregory Nohner and Michelle Laxo and Dee Love, and all of them running for two slots, two seats on Centerville City Council on November 6. Here's a quick reminder, you can find these programs on North Metro TV and on the city-dedicated channels all the way through Election Day, November 6. You can also read more about these candidates and about our coverage of the election on northmetrotv.com. Thank you for joining us tonight for North Metro TV News. I'm Rusty Ray.